Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring you the April tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors to order. Mr. Fagan, here. Ms. Alonso, here. Mr. Goldsboro.
Here.
Ms. Berkia, here. Ms. Joseph, here. Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Chabon.
Here.
Mr. Evans, can we have the registration?
I would not be in your.
Heavenly Father, please swear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interbar School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All the gifts we ask in your name. Amen.
Good evening, students. The United States of America, and to your mother, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael.
Yeah.
Knife on the car.
First up, number two, we're going to have our student representative of the book coach, Samantha.
All right. At the kindergarten, parent and teacher conferences were held in March. This was a great opportunity for you to hear about your child's growth and progress as well, as well as what he or she still needs to work on. Please take time to read with your child each night a copy of Chocolate Touch by Ole Students in March. Participating in the different activities and reading this as well as a family is a great way to grow their literacy skills. Take time this spring and observe your child through the many ways he or she has grown and celebrate the successes. Thank you for all that, all you do as, as parents and guardians to spread for the inspiring children.
At Glen, Glen Olden School is pleased to announce new members of the Home and School Board. Caitlin Royer will be the new president, and Jamie Wilkin will be the new treasurer. They are very excited for the upcoming, upcoming two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. On March eighth, the sixth grade went to the movies to see The Kid Who Would You Kill? The students had a great morning watching the modern remake based on The Sword in the Stone. The theater workers said that the students were the most pleasant moviegoers they've had. In honor of March Madness, students dressed in their favorite college gear on March twenty first, and their homeroom was given a team to follow. The last team standing won a pretzel party. Glen Olden had a few, quite a few spirit days this past month. On the twenty first, students were encouraged to wear crazy socks to show their support for Down Syndrome awareness. On the twenty eighth, they celebrated opening day and wore their Phillies gear. Their spirit helped the Phillies bring in a home win. And finally, on April second, Glen Olden's halls were a sea of blue as they participated in World Autism Awareness Day. They proudly lit up the school blue and helped to raise money for the high school men's lacrosse autism awareness game. Every student was also given a puzzle ribbon to wear proudly throughout the month to show their support for others. On March twenty second, students from the high school treated students to a preview of the show All Shook Up. Everyone enjoyed the performance. Crazy Eights is an after-school math club that makes learning math fun for second graders run by Mrs. DiAlonso and Mrs. Rowe. It is centered around activities, activities that connect math to real life and to other subject areas. Crazy Eights allows students of all math abilities to work together on high-energy, unique math activities. Students in fourth and fifth grades have been enjoying playing wiffle ball after school. And the Yankee Candle fundraiser is underway. This is a fundraiser sponsored by the Home and School Association and will be in on time for Mother's Day. Student of the Month assemblies were held on March twenty ninth. A student from each homeroom was recognized for being courteous. They then enjoyed a light refreshment with their families in the library to celebrate their achievement.
At Norwood School, the Norwood teachers defeated the eighth grade in the annual floor hockey game, ten to three, on Wednesday, March fifteenth. Thank you for all who, thank you for all who had participated. Norwood had several students entered into a flower drawing contest run by an art group called Fresh Artists. This contest was in conjunction with the Philadelphia Flower Show. All two thousand entries submitted by various districts in the Philadelphia area were hanging in Jefferson Station at the entrance of, to the Flower Show. However, only a few were selected by Fresh Artists to be used in advertising for the show. We are pleased to announce that Norwood's own Bevan Trulia will have his artwork reproduced and featured on the side of a septuaglosses for a subway. American Legion placed five hundred and seventh annual Americanism essay contest winners were celebrated on Wednesday, March twentieth, at a award dinner. These winners were eighth, seventh and eighth grade winners were Alyssa Agent in first place, Deanna Tolan in second place, and Lauren Brown in third place. And the fifth and sixth grade winners were Candace Lee in first place, Para Rambeer Heelakew in second place, and Morgan Fitzpatrick in third place. On Wednesday, March twenty first, we celebrated and supported World Down Syndrome Day by wearing a pair of crazy socks. If you wear, if you wore a pair of silly socks, you were promoted to awareness to celebrate all things wonderful about people with Down Syndrome. So they, so that they are able to achieve their full potential and lead fulfilling lives. Norwood School sold over five pair of socks, pair of socks. So a huge thank you for all who, for all who were participating this year.
At Prospect Park, the month began with a Dr. Seuss Day celebration. Students in primary grades participated in several activities and listened to guest readers. Home and School hosted their yearly bingo night to a packed house. And elementary students were treated to a special PBS reward for their wonderful behavior throughout the second trimester with the brain show. Students in every class participated in the trivia game show and danced along to music. Seventh grade students had an opportunity to visit the city for the Constitution Center Yellow Fever Tour. This provided an opportunity to see and experience the events from the novel Fever, which they are reading in class.
At Tencum School, Tencum held its, its Dr. Seuss Celebration Read Across American Day on Friday, March first, with books in pajamas in the afternoon for all grades. Students were allowed to wear pajamas to school. Students also brought flash, flashlights to school so they could read in the dark. Everyone had a great reading experience. On March sixth, we celebrated National Breakfast Day. All the students were, and staff were invited to have breakfast at school that day. The students were reminded how important it is to eat breakfast and how it is valuable, available in the school cafeteria. A good, a good breakfast was had by all. On March seventh, our annual Battle of the Bear Dodge Bowl game was held at the high school. It was a tough competition, but and then the Glen Olden team won for the students and our, and our very Tencum team won for the staff. Thanks to everyone who came to watch.
At the high school, on March second, the Frosh Dance was held in the gym from seven to ten, and a good time was had by all. On March fifteenth, the Home and School Craft Fair, Craft Fair was another successful event. We had a great turnout and many crafters. Special thanks to Mrs. Margie Evans and all the volunteers for all their hard work. We truly appreciate everything Mrs. Evans does for our students. On March twenty eighth through the thirtieth, this year's musical was All Shook Up. The students did a fantastic job. The singing, acting, and dancing was spectacular. We are truly blessed to have so much talent in our community. A big thank you to Ms. Canass, Mrs. Oden, and Ms. Hume for all their hard work, and this concludes our report.
Thank you. Moving on to number three, recognition.
Do not. Do not call Mr. Chabon back.
Okay.
We did lose him.
Did we?
Mid-study before.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, sorry, I'll dial here.
Okay.
Number four, public comments. We have next.
Yes, first we have Mr. Pat Quinn.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Pat Quinn, Prospect Park. I'm here tonight to represent the Delaware Boys Basketball League and also mention the Girls' Basketball League. Wanted to thank the board and Bernard Dad and Mr. Galloway and the whole facilities organization that graciously shared the gyms with us this season. Ballpark, we have a hundred and fifty plus boys and girls teams from average sixteen hundred kids from six school districts and one in all, most of the school district kids and their coaches and players always tell me that Interbar is one of the most welcoming school districts. And you guys do a number of things, I'm sure you're aware, in the summer, we do our Norwood Tournament again. Hundreds of kids from around the Southeast Elko area show up and play ball during the Christmas week, keeps them out of trouble. And finally, we just finished a game between the teachers of Prospect Park and some facilities folks against the coaches of Prospect Park. Saudi Ag was a coach of the teachers and my first loss in coaching many years, but also I haven't coached in many years, so that may expose me to the poor teachers. But it was a great, great time, and our food bank was ecstatic. We gained four, four hundred and fifty pounds of food to them, and I just have to tell you that the food bank is just so thrilled that this school district supports them and the communities and gives back. This is one of the secrets of the program. So thank you again all, and great night.
Thank you.
Mr. Zerdi Dodi.
President Phelps and members of the board, want to start by saying a thank you to Representative Alonso. Out of the nineteenth school board directors that have been on the board since the passing of the airport agreement in April of two thousand fifteen, she is the first one that gave voice to one of the issues that I've raised a number of times regarding the documentation that is supposed to be provided by the city of Philadelphia to Delaware County, which in turn is supposed to return that documentation to the township and the school district. So I want to thank you for that. It had took nineteen board directors to actually get to that point, so that's unfortunate, but there's still an issue with that. Number nineteen, the contract for the superintendent, what is the salary that you are going to pass tonight?
One. One second. We have to be exact here. One eighty-two, three forty-five.
One eighty-two, three forty-five. And what are the, is there an increase? It's for five years, so are there any increases in the additional years?
Yes, there is.
And what are they?
It's based on a percentage.
Say that again?
It's based on a percentage.
And what is that percentage?
Three percent.
How much?
Three.
Percent per year?
Yes.
Okay. And is there any condition as to whether there's, like you have on your reports that there is a satisfactory report for the superintendent? Is, is the increase is based on the, no. He's shaking his head yes, and he's shaking his head no. No, it's not. So it's a three percent across the board increase?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I think that that's justified and... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodi. Any other public comments?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to number five, we have minutes.
Motion five, twenty-one, five minutes of the regular reading of the Interbar Board of School Directors held on March twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries nine, zero. And next up, number six, our solicitor's report, Ms. Goyan.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This month, our firm has been consulting with the school district on special education issues, student discipline issues, as well as contract review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goyan. Moving on to number seven, financial, Mr. Evans.
Motion seven point one, did the treasurer's report for the month of March thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, be approved?
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded by nine questions or comments from the board. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. And number eight, any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Moving on to number nine, committee reports, nine point one, finance, get that, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand nineteen. I'm sorry, this, this is the date of the report. The Finance Committee met on Monday, April first, two thousand nineteen, at seven P.M. The following items were on the agenda: Review of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund budget, review of the Technology Curriculum and Instruction and Special Education Department budgets. Review, review of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund budget. There were no additional revenues this month. Expenditures were reduced by four hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, totaling sixty-eight million, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, four, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. Major reductions came from ironies, changes from the second look for health care, and reductions for DCIU transportation for early inter-registered students. At a zero percent tax increase, we are at a one point four million dollar deficit. At a three point one percent tax increase, we would be at a two hundred and three thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar deficit. Department budget presentation overview. The technology department is still finalizing numbers to present to the board for various leases and technology upgrades. No final determination has been made on purchasing new technology. For curriculum and instruction, the directors shared the various increases and decreases for each line item, and outline of professional development was shared, as well as the different programs that are utilized throughout the district. A supervisor for literacy was proposed. The committee asked for more information, and a decision has not been made. The directors also mentioned that various textbooks and resources are going to need to be purchased in the coming years. These costs could be sizable, since we are no longer receiving the KTO grant. From the Office of Special, Special Education and People Services, much of this budget is, is determined based on outline placement, charter school tuition, and cyber charter tuition that we're legally obligated to spend. The directors proposed four new positions. The board asked for more detailed explanation of how the decisions will be funded and what their role would be. No decision has been made, and we will continue to discuss. That's it for Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Next up is nine point two, GBO meeting, Mr. Evans.
Yes, on Monday, April first, the GBO meeting took place, and during that GBO meeting, the only thing that was presented at the time was a presentation by Mr. Fanning about the Tencum school improvements, about the playgrounds, the grades one through four playgrounds, and also courtyard walk.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to nine point three, legislative, Ms. Rickio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Legislative Council meeting was actually this morning, and the main focus of the meeting was on Senate Bill thirty-four, House Bill five twenty-six, which is the cyber school and putting an end to cyber charter school waste. So that was the main talk, and there is also the talk of the PSBA is hosting or scheduling an advocacy day in Harrisburg. And PSBA and school board members and directors will be attending this advocacy day at the state capitol in Harrisburg, and the focus of this will be meeting with legislators to discuss critical, critical issues affecting public education and the cyber sports. And also, there is an upcoming legislative breakfast, which will be held at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit in Morton, and the main focus of that upcoming meeting is also going to be on the charter school reform and cyber, I'm sorry, cyber charter reform as well. And there'll be guest speakers Larry Feinberg, the president of Haverford School Board, and he is also the co-chair of the Legislative Council, will also be speaking and giving us an update. Larry Feinberg is also going to Harrisburg, so he, we basically get a lot of information from him when he has his meetings and comes back and informs the council members. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rickio. Moving on to nine point four, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Yes, our meeting, our last meeting took place on Wednesday, April third, at the Delaware County Community College. We were given, we showed up, I showed up early, and a number of us went on a tour of the Delaware County Community College campus, showed around, showed around a number of the buildings there and a number of the different facilities. Pretty impressive with the amount of technology that they have in that facility. We were also given a tour of the tech and manufacturing building, which is fairly new, getting an idea of some of the on-job training, or training that they can do there, so people can not only earn a degree, but they can also earn certificates for certain types of things. So that was, that was quite impressive to get a chance to see that. When we sat down and had our meeting, there was a discussion about the possible purchase of the Pendergast Building and of Darby, also known as the Pendergast Building. That is being discussed. There's no, there's no bill of sale right now, but there's being, that is something that's being discussed. And also, a date, the other thing that was discussed was also a date for our next de-lit liaison meeting, which will be tentatively October thirtieth, Wednesday, October thirtieth. They tried to do it the twenty-third, but I think that's when we're going to be having our board meeting, so I said, yeah. It's, we tried to do it, right? And that's everything that I have for that.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Next up, nine point five, Delaware County Community, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. The Delaware County Community Board was held on April third, two thousand nineteen. Couple of things was discussed. Partnership agreement with Code.org to provide professional development for kindergarten to twelfth-grade teachers throughout eastern Pennsylvania. DCIU, DCIU will also host Young PAX LLC Summer Camp from June twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth, and also July twenty-third to twenty-seventh, and again, July thirtieth to July to August third. This is for students nine to fifteen. Enhanced financial responsibilities, the DCIU will continue managing the Delaware County Public Schools Healthcare Trust. Upcoming events, as Ms. Rickio said, is the Legislative Breakfast held on Friday, May seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty A.M. at the Morton Educational Center. Ms. Rickio talked about that. We also have a lot of awards ceremonies going on for the DCIU, DCT, the DFJ's.
DCTF.
Thank you, what she said, which is the vocational schools. Awards is at twelve thirty P.M. on May second is the Fallcroft Campus one, on May third, the Aston Campus one. The senior recognition ceremony will be six o'clock, May sixteenth, at the Newman College. The next board of directors meeting will be May first, two thousand nineteen. For more news and information, go to DCIU.org. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to nine point six, community outreach, Ms. Alonso.
The only thing I have is, going back to what I discussed last month, is the flag in, which is still set for May fifteenth, nine A.M., rain date of May twenty-second. We're looking at approximately a hundred students from Interbar to participate in this event. Afterwards, we're looking to host them, most likely at the Norwood VFW, post seventy-two thirteen, with pizza and other refreshments afterwards. It'll also satisfy some junior and senior projects that some juniors and seniors can participate in. So that's still all in the works. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso. At this time, the students can be excused.
Great chocolate, great candy. It's really good.
Good job with the play, yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to number ten.
Yes, sir. Motion ten point one to ten point six, starting on page two and ending on page three, that the following personnel, asking items to be approved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Retirement motion eleven point one, with regret, that the following retirements be approved. The lower speaker, bus driver with twelve years of service in the district, be approved for retirement effective April twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next, Mr. Evans, office.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, that the following items be approved, motion twelve point one to twelve point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next, fifteen, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, People's Services, is motion thirteen point one to thirteen point four, that the following items be approved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next up, fifteen.
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved. Board of school directors approve square nine custom S Q L scripting and remote access services, cost not to exceed thirty-eight eighty. That's three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars expenses to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion's, motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion fifteen, that board of school directors approve the four-day summer work week beginning in the week of June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, and continuing through the week ending August sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion sixteen, that the board of school directors urge its elected officials to support legislation that corrects the tuition for regular and special education to cyber charter schools so that it is based on the actual cost of educating their students and relieves the financial burden on school districts and taxpayers.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine, zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion seventeen is a roll call motion that the board of school directors approve the following persons to be reappointed to the board of trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Corinne A. Caldwell, Donald L. Heller, Robert W. McCauley, and Kevin B. Scott.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call in this place?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Motion 10.1 to 10.6, starting on page two and ending on page three, that the following personnel, Aston items, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Retirement motion, 11.1, with regret, that the following retirements be approved. The Laura Sickers bus driver with 12 years of service in the district be approved for retirement effective April 12th, 2019.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 11.2, that Darling Green, her bus driver with 6 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 14th, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next, Mr. Evans' office.
From the Office of Curriculum Instruction, that the following items be approved, motion 12.1 to 12.2.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next, 14, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, is motion 13.1 to 13.4, that the following items be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next up, 14, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion, that the following items be approved. Board of school directors approve Square 9 custom SGL stripping and remote access services cost not to exceed $38.80, that's $3,880 expenses to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 15, that the board of school directors approve the four-day summer workweek beginning in the week of June 24th, 2019, and continuing through the week ending August 16th, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 16, that the board of school directors urge selected officials to support legislation that corrects the tuition for regular and special education to cyber charter schools so that it's based on the actual cost of educating their students and relieves the financial burden on school districts and taxpayers.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 17 is a roll call motion, that the board of school directors approve the following persons to be reappointed to the board of trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June 30th, 2025, Karina Caldwell, Donald L. Heller, Robert W. McCauley, and Kevin B. Scott.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Rique?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 18 is also a roll call motion, that the board of school directors approve the memorandum of understanding with the Interboro Education Support Personnel concerning Article 37.5 of the current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Rique, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Rique?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 19 is also a roll call motion, motion to renew the contract of Superintendent Bernard C. Riley for a five-year term commencing July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2024, and to approve the contract presented.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Rique?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. You'll get a chance to talk. Okay. Nice. I know that's a guarantee.
Any old business, any new business. Moving now here from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would like, I did write some comments, just so I could stay up here. I would like to thank the board for allowing me the honor and privilege of continuing to serve as Interboro School District Superintendent. This would not be possible without all of your support. Thank you for putting your trust in me and this administrative team. Never did I imagine, 26 years ago when I began my career here, that I might one day hold this position. I truly love this community. I've gotten to know so many parents and staff and students over the years, and I am proud of the work that we have accomplished. Many of the students that I taught have stayed or moved back to the district to raise their families here. That means a lot to me. I am very fortunate to have an administrative team that I work with every day. I would like to thank the directors, the principals, the assistant principals for their dedication to the students and the community of this district. I believe we are a very collaborative group, and I look forward to continuing the work together, so thank you, all of you. I would like to thank the leadership of our bargaining groups. I believe we have an open communication and dialogue, and therefore are able to work across the table and collectively work for the betterment of the students of this district, and that's a very important aspect of what we do every day here. Finally, to Marge and my family, who are always there for me, and understand and know all too well the meaning of 24/7, especially the 3:30 a.m. snow calls, inclement weather calls that start, so thank you always for your constant support. I look forward to continue our work, and thank you so much for your support, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Comments, just general. Thank you. I would like to congratulate the entire Interboro Theater Company, Ms. Hannah Canales and Ms. Oden, for their outstanding work on the performance of All Shook Up. We had approximately 120 students participate, from cast and stage crew to pit crew, costume, costume, hair, makeup, house, crew publicity, and technology. All students managed all of these different aspects. We had over 1,500 theatergoers attend the performances. It was wonderful, again, to see a lot of our community members, who don't even have children in the school, attend, but love Elvis Presley music, come out and enjoy the show. I got a number of emails from community members, former employees, who wanted to compliment the work of our theater department. I also want to recognize the booster parents, and how much they do behind the scenes to support the growth of this program. They really go above and beyond to support our students and its success. The students also raised over $1,200 for the Philadelphia Independence Awards Given Musical Campaign. The goal is to raise money to give as a grant to a school that is in need of funds to either start or continue their musical theater program. It was great to see them speak about this afterwards, and they're interested in wanting to support schools that may not have the ability to put a program on like this. A reminder to our pre-K kindergarten parents, that registration is underway. We are here, information is available on the website, and we are also open on Wednesday evenings from 4 to 7. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a restful spring break, that begins at the end of Friday, and will be back on Tuesday, April 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do we have any comments from the board?
I'd love a real quick comment.
Yes, Mr. Shabon.
Thank you guys for letting me call in. Also, Jamie did a great job seconding, and I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. Riley. It's been a pleasure working with her, and you know, it's a difficult job, but we see how, thank me and you to the community, so everyone take valuations. What's the score?
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
I'm going to go over it in five seconds, I have no idea, I hear you, hear you.
I just had a couple of things real quick. Congratulations, Miss Riley. I can't think of anybody that's more well-deserving of this. She's worked hard her entire career, not just the last few years, for this school district, and for our students, and she's very supportive with our administration, our I can't say enough about you, Miss Riley. You're a very good superintendent, very dedicated, loyal to this district, and I appreciate you. Second, I'd like to say, congratulations to Ms. Canales. That show was so entertaining, I cannot begin to tell you. I've been singing since I saw you. I want to tell you, it was so creative, so entertaining, from the beginning to the end. She just did an outstanding job. I'm sitting there watching our kids, and I'm thinking, America has talent, Interboro has talent. I did not realize we had so many good singers that are in this district. It was just, it just blew me away. It was just fantastic. I couldn't go to a Broadway show and have had a better time. That's the guy's honest truth. Second, I want to thank someone on this board, always goes above and beyond, Mr. Evans, serves on this board, serves on sports, serves on theater. I can't tell you how much he does. Any function you go to, I try to do what I can, but he is there. I don't know whether Ms. Evans makes him go, or he goes on his own, okay? But he is there, he's picking up pools for service, he's doing, he's building stages for the theater, and not just, I mean, there's a lot of, I know personally, and Mr. Evans, I just want to thank you.
You're welcome, happy to do it. It's always fun.
Yes. Anything else from the board?
Well, just in that same vein, the Interboro Boys Lacrosse is having autism awareness fundraiser game on Saturday at the sports complex. The paperwork is in your folders, if you have an opportunity to stop down, helps raise money for local autism issues.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Phelps, real quick?
Yes, Mr. Golds.
I just want to talk about the dedication of the board, and Mr. Shabon calling in from the disability team, so well done, Mr. Shabon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Hearing none, on Monday, May 6th, 2019, a financing committee meeting with the GBO is convened immediately following, will be held at 7:00 a.m. in the boardroom of the administration building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, May 13th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the high school auditorium on Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Yes, I did say, high school auditorium.
Just for that.
Yes, just so you know. Okay? Reading adjourned, thank you all for coming.